Well, I think we are at 6:30. This is Peter Pritchard. And I declare the February meeting of Morrisville Land and Zoning Board. Marty, would you please do the official roll call?
Yes, sir. Chairman Pritchard.
Here.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Here.
Member Ocharia.
Here.
Member SAC.
Here.
Member Toterai.
Here.
Member Michael.
Here.
Member Robot.
Here.
All are present and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Marty. Any changes to the agenda from the staff side?
No, they're not, Chairman.
Thank you. So we'll move right ahead to item three, which is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. First is January. And does anybody have any changes or corrections to the January minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the January minutes.
I move to approve the January minutes.
Thank you, Ken. Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Sanjay. Marty, would you please do the roll call vote?
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Ocharia.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
The January minutes have been approved.
Thank you. Michelle or Marty, would you like to just introduce item three B, which is the November minutes? Just to clarify, I think there was a slight modification that we needed to make.
Yes, this is Marty. We did apparently incorrectly state the vote for recommendations for chairman and vice chairman. It should have been six to one instead of five to two.
Okay. Thank you. So with that correction, I entertain a motion to approve the corrected November 2020 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the November minutes.
Motion is made by Sanjay, seconded by Ken. Marty, please go ahead and do the roll call vote.
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Ocharia.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
The November, the corrected November minutes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. Moving ahead to item four, do we have any public comment that's being submitted?
Yes, sir. We have received one comment that has nothing to do with the other agenda items.
So will you read that to us, Marty?
Yes, sir. This comment is from Steve Lauderdale. He states, "I am a Marsville resident. I reside at 2104 Glade Valley Lane. During PZB's December 10th meeting, the PZB discussed the land use plans references to the Wake County Public School System. There were comments about Wake County's capped and crowded schools. There was a comment that, quote, "They haven't gotten it right in the last 45 or so years," end quote. Strangely, that was followed by a suggestion to work with Durham Schools to address the lack of school infrastructure. I hope the PZB realizes that Durham Public Schools cannot come to the rescue of Marsville families dealing with capped and crowded Wake County Public Schools. We am disappointed that PZB members may have pushed for a land use plan with extensive up classifications based on a false hope that Durham Public Schools would come to the rescue. So I think it is important that the PZB understand facts and state law. I hope PC PZB members will acknowledge that the Durham idea is a non-starter in terms of addressing the school structure issue. On the other hand, slowing down growth until the infrastructure catches up would help the school situation. Finally, I am very thankful that one PZB member had the foresight to understand reality and vote against the land use plan, in part because of the impact on schools. Thanks. P.S. Wake County Public School System capacity planning is not a joke." The end. That's it.
Thank you, Marty. Then we'll head now to item five. And will you introduce this, Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Pritchard. Elliot Ward, Planner Two Elliot Ward is off this evening, therefore I'll be presenting this item for you. It is a request for an amendment and zoning map amendment to the Aviation Landing Mixed-Use Plan Development District. Some of you are probably familiar with the location of the property. This did come before you about a year ago. The site is outlined in red on the aerial on the screen. It's located on Aviation between Liberty Hill Pass and Bearcat Way and kind of meanders back to Sunset Avenue. It's a combination of a number of different kind of oddly shaped parcels that will be combined to accommodate the project. This is a rendering of the original approval. Just to refresh everyone's memories, the project does include two mixed-use buildings fronting on Aviation Parkway and then a number of townhomes in the rear of the site extending to Sunset Avenue. Do you want to draw your attention to this area here, which is the road in the back of the site connecting to Sunset? That is the subject of the major modification request. The petitioner is proposing to realign that road. So on the left of the screen, you see the original approval with the road running along the western property line. The petitioner is proposing to flip the road and put it up against the western property line. That will have a significant impact on how the neighboring properties are likely to develop and is thereby therefore classified as a major amendment to the original approval and required to go back through the Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council Review process with the associated public comment periods and public hearings. The applicant is also requesting a zoning map amendment. This area here that's highlighted in yellow is proposed to be incorporated into the site. So right now, that is a neighboring property. It's about 0.14 acres. That's being proposed to be rezoned from the RT Residential Transition Zoning District into the Mixed-Use Plan Development Zoning District, so it could become a part of this project. And the unique road cross-section that was approved for this development can be incorporated in that area. There are a couple other minor modifications that are wrapped into the request. One, to increase the maximum front yard setback from 18 feet to 24 feet. Also, some clarification related to the culvert under Aviation Parkway due to some updated information from NCDOT and some other minor language changes. Staff is recommending approval of the major modification and zoning map amendment. We believe that the request is consistent with the recommendations in the Town Center Plan. It would allow development that is compatible with the residential subdivision to the north and is consistent with the recommendations in the Unified Development Ordinance. Also, the plan does remain substantially similar to what it was before, albeit it does have a different impact on the adjacent properties. And there are two items for your consideration this evening. One is a resolution pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement and the other, an ordinance approving the major amendment and zoning map amendment. I believe the applicant would like to address the board briefly. And after that, I'd be welcome to take any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. So I invite a specimen for the applicant to go ahead.
Good evenings, members of the planning board and Michelle. My name is Chris Rakowski with TMT LA Associates at 5011 South Park Drive in Durham. The representative for the developer. I think Michelle pretty much summed up everything that we've discussed at length. I don't think it's this point. The, this would be, we kicked this up into the major amendment since we are including additional 5,000 square feet of another site into this zoning district, so we can apply a road cross-section to that. And I think it really helps to clean up this, this strange corner at the end of Sunset Ave there, since Sunset Ave kind of just dead ends at our neighbor's parcel. So this really helps them to, gives them the opportunity to develop between the west side of the creek that is running through their property and this stub street that we are now providing them frontage on. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that, that board members may have, and thank you for your time again.
Thank you, Mr. Rakowski. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge that this is a meeting with public comment. So do we have any other folks who want to make public comment, or did we receive any via email, Marty?
No, sir. We've received no other public comments.
So I think then we can move ahead to board member comments and questions. I hardly dare say this, but the technology still seems to be working for me this evening. So if you have a comment or wish to chime in, if you would just indicate that on the chat, that would be great. Member Robot, I think you have a question. Go ahead, Chris.
Yes, I do. It's just a minor question about the multi-use plan. I think it was slide six. I was just curious, is it only retail facing the sidewalk? I didn't, how do you access delivery trucks and loading, just out of curiosity, to orient myself for the two orange buildings?
Mr. Rakowski, would you like to reply to that?
Sure. So, so the, for the zoning portion of this, we are looking at doing retail and commercial on the first floor only in either office or residential on the two floors above. And we have designed kind of, well, preliminarily designed the parking lot to allow for, for loading of and unloading of smaller, smaller trucks and vehicles. And then as in the north and south side of the building, there's also emergency access to Aviation Parkway, which was requested by the fire department. So we have good circulation throughout there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chairman Langston, Lee, I think you have a question.
Yes, I guess my question may be from Michelle. So I mean, I was reading in the request that it was saying, you know, that the setback change would help them meet other setbacks, you know, on the corners. Is there any negative to increasing the setback on the other lots that I'm missing?
No, it is a setback increase, not a setback decrease. Staff has no objection to it, but I'll allow the petitioner to address that question as well.
Yeah, so Mr. Langston, the, the reason for it is for the, you can see on the slide, on the right side of the slide here, the lots on the corner are, will be beyond the, we had a maximum setback of 18 feet. So the purpose of that is to pull the buildings up near the street, create a nice streetscape. And on the corner here, we're unable to, to make that, because we're trying to make that, that T there at 90 degrees or as close to it as we can. So by increasing the maximum front setback to 24 feet allows us to do that in those, at those units there, we'll be able to pull them back from the street and keep them in line with, with the rest and still meet that requirement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members have any comments or questions? So I'll chime in with a question I think I know the answer to, but just to make sure. So this proposal does not increase the number of dwelling units. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so the townhomes on the north of your project, they will now face east, whereas previously they were due to face west. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And we have the luxury of having submitted for our combined site plan and construction drawing. So it's a little more developed on the right side there. So that, that's pretty much what, exactly what you're gonna get is what you see on the right.
Very good. Thank you. It's good to see. So any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? If we have none, then I think we have some script available. I believe we need to make a consistency statement. Looking for a volunteer to go ahead with that.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Ken.
As required by General Statute 160A-383, I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 2021-24-0 to the Morrisville Town Council pertaining to the adoption of a Plan Consistency Review Statement for a major amendment to the Aviation Landing Mixed-Use Plan Development Zoning District, approved by ordinance 2018-449-0, Res. 332-2020, based on the following. The requested major amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because, A, the Town Central Land Use Map identifies the subject land as new supporting residential, which is consistent with the Aviation Landing Mixed-Use Plan Development approved under ordinance 2018-499-0. B, the Aviation Landing Mixed-Use Plan Development District will serve as an appropriate transition from the existing adjacent residential development identified in the Town Center Plan as new supporting residential to the existing adjacent commercial uses identified in the Town Center Plan as existing supporting commercial industrial areas, institutional areas.
Thank you, Ken. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
A second from Tim Toterai. So we have a motion and a second. But Marty, would you please go ahead and do the roll call vote?
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Ocharia.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. Michelle, do you want to move ahead?
Yes, there is also an ordinance to be acted on by the board as well.
So I need a volunteer who would like to make that motion.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Sanjay. Please go ahead.
Let me pull up the text here. Give me a second. Sorry about it. Okay. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance 201, 2021-24-0 to the Morrisville Town Council, approving the major amendment and zoning map amendment to the Aviation Landing Mixed-Use Planning Development District located along the north side of Aviation Parkway and north east of Liberty Hill Pass and approved by ordinance 2018-449-0,
Thank you, Sanjay. Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Seconded by Ken. Marty, would you please do the roll call vote?
Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Ochara.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
The zoning map amendment was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. So I think that's it for this item. Thank the applicants and their representatives for attending and hope you make a very nice, attractive job of, of the project.
Thank you each for your time this evening. We certainly hope to.
Very good. Thank you. And just a, a comment. Elliot Ward was very successful in delegating that action item up to you. Michelle, I think he was supposed to be presenting it, but thank you.
He deserves some time off.
So now we have item six, and it's a pleasure to have Ben in front of the board. It's been some time, Ben, so welcome.
Thank you. Yes, it's been a little while. So I'm gonna present tonight to the board, just provide you a little bit of an overview of some upcoming access and circulation text amendments to the UDO that we plan to bring to you next month. Next slide. So seemingly way back at the 2020 Town Council Retreat, council directed staff to work on text amendments for this section as one of the priorities. And just as a reminder, this section of UDO includes standards and requirements for infrastructure improvements in accordance with the CTP, as well as transportation impact analysis thresholds and requirements, vehicular bicycle and pedestrian connectivity and access and circulation requirements, and vehicular access management requirements. Next slide. The current standards, I'll go through briefly here over the next few slides. This slide is focused on the current infrastructure and TIA requirements. And essentially, currently, as we've been doing, we require developers to dedicate right of way and construct streets on their site in accordance with the CTP, including frontage of their site. And then off-site, we require developers to either construct or contribute funds towards this improvements in the vicinity that may be directly, that may not be directly on the site or on the frontage. And these improvements are generally identified in a TIA. This, the section also includes TIA requirements and standards, including the thresholds and then some general requirements and standards for actually preparing a TIA, which you see laid out there on the slide. Next slide. The section of the UDO 5.8 also includes standards for vehicular connectivity, including a requirement for a circulation plan, requirements for multiple points of access. Again, depending on the number of units or size of non-residential structures, there's also a requirement for multiple points, depending on the height of the structure as well. We have public street connectivity requirements, including requiring, providing for the extension of public streets to boundaries of the development. And then we also have cross-access requirements for certain developments. Primarily single fam, primarily mixed-use and non-residential developments, but it also includes single-family attached developments, which are townhome developments. Next slide. We also have vehicular access management standards, which can, which includes limitation of driveways onto thoroughfares, as well as limitations on access for certain developments onto collectors and lower-level roadways. We also have standards for gating of streets, intersection site distances, fire lanes, stacking spaces for drive-through facilities. And then, of course, we have our driveway spacing requirements from street intersections. And we also have street intersection spacing requirements. Next slide. And then finally, the section ends with bicycle, pedestrian access and circulation requirements, which for the most part require bicycle lanes to be provided pursuant to the CTP and also bicycle access provisions incorporated into any cross-access. For the pedestrian access circulation, again, it, this is where we require sidewalks along the frontage of development and inside the development site. We also require that developments must include greenways from the CTP. And we may require developments to, to provide pedestrian connections between a cul-de-sac and a sidewalk on a public road. And of course, if cross-access is required, they also should incorporate provisions for pedestrian access into that cross-access. Next slide. And next slide. So next, I'll go over some of our proposed revisions. For the infrastructure and TIA requirements, the primary revisions on the infrastructure requirements is clarification and, and also trying to just simplify our requirements and simplify our language. Again, our infrastructure improvements will be based on the CTP or a TIA. And we are dividing the requirements into three different categories with the revisions. We have onsite improvements, frontage improvements, and then the off-site vicinity improvements. And we are also removing the requirement for circulation plan because we have found that we generally don't use those plans. And most of that, if not all of that information is provided on the site plan itself. For the TIA requirements, we are proposing to revise the threshold language to clarify when a TIA was required, but not necessarily change the primary thresholds we use, which is the 100 trips in any hour, 1,000 trips per day. So we will keep that threshold. And then we are also moving our general requirements and standards into the UDO Administrative Manual to allow for more flexibility as standards for how TIs are, are done. And so that we can, it'll be easier for us to change and, and revise our standards as the general practice is changed. And it also allows for us to modify our standards if it's a unique development. We've had this situation a little bit in the past. And having the standards in the UDO can sometimes limit our flexibility in how TIs are done. This will just give us a little bit more flexibility, but we'll still have basic standards to follow. The UDO will still include scoping MAU and recommendation requirements. Next slide. For vehicular connectivity, we are removing the, we have a chart currently in the section of the vehicle accessway classifications. We have found that that chart is a little bit out of date and not really used in the UDO itself, so we're removing that chart. We do have vehicle, we do have roadway classifications in our CTP, and that's where we will continue to, to go. That's where we will continue to go for roadway classifications. We are also looking at revising the sections of the ordinance related to requirements for multiple means of access to clarify and simplify that section and also clarifying the requirements for connectivity of public streets. And also working on the cross-access section to clarify the requirements and also add some flexibility into those requirements. Because we have found sometimes that the cross-access does not necessarily make sense. So we're adding a little bit, trying to add a little bit of flexibility and make it clear exactly when that cross-access is required and how it should be provided. Next slide. For vehicular access management, we are clarifying some of the driveway limitation language and also moving the street intersection spacing standards to the EDCM where they really should, should be. Where, because that can be, the spacing between street intersections can sometimes be, you know, minimized based on engineering judgment. So we're trying to allow our town engineer to, to provide some of that judgment for us. And then finally, we are also revising our driveway spacing requirements and including a new requirement for spacing between driveways. The table you see in the PowerPoint is one, is the initial proposal that we had worked on. And we've worked on including some additional language in the amendments you will most likely see next month that adds a little bit more flexibility into that, especially when it comes to existing uses and existing driveways and non-conformities. Next slide. We're also revising the bicycle and pedestrian access and circulation sections. Bicycle access and circulation, we're revising the section to really focus in on the provision of bicycle lanes as recommended in the CTP. And then the pedestrian access and circulation, we're really trying to clarify the requirements in that section, including where and when sidewalks and greenways are required. And also add the new requirement, add a new requirement for construction of greenway connectors pursuant to our CTP, since we have added those into our CTP now. And also revise and clarify the requirements for when a pedestrian cut-through is required from the end of a cul-de-sac to a public road. And also clarify the requirements for pedestrian cross-access. Next slide. Some other changes, clarifying the requirements for modifications to existing developments or redevelopment of existing lots or uses and new development. And again, trying to just add, one of the big things we're trying to do is add some more flexibility in for modifications to existing developments and redevelopment of existing lots and uses. Especially as early to driveway spacing, cross-access requirements, because we have found that at times our requirements are more stringent than they really need to be. And it's with them in the, with how it's currently written in the UDO, it can be very difficult to, to modify those requirements. We are also looking to better address nonforming uses. And by identifying specific triggers for meeting some of the requirements in the section with changes to nonconforming uses. Next slide. In December 2020, we held a stakeholder Q and A session over Teams Live. Next slide. Where we talked to primarily, the, the attendees were primarily engineering firm representatives who do a lot of our, a lot of TIA work for developers in town. And we also had a couple of developers on there, as well as, I believe, at least one or two council members. And so some of the feedback we received from the professionals included addressing if the thresholds for TIA include internal capture and pass-by trips. And this is a really technical item, but essentially internal capture is a term that covers for mixed-use developments when trips do not leave the development itself. So for example, the, think of Park West Village where you have both apartments and retail. Internal capture is the number of trips that are just going from the apartments in Park West to the retail in Park West, but are not actually getting out onto the external street network. And then pass-by trips are, again, used primarily on retail uses. And that's trips that are already on the network that may stop by the use, but that are not necessarily generated by the use. So again, there's a question about if there's a way to include a clarification in the ordinance or in the standards about how those are, how internal capture and pass-by trips are handled with our thresholds. There's also a concern brought up about basing the TIA threshold on net new trips for redevelopment. In other words, if someone is taking a site that currently has uses on it and wants to tear those down and add new use and replace with different uses, instead of only looking at the number of trips that'll be generated by the new uses, taking the number of trips that would be generated by the previous use and subtracting that from the number of trips that would be generated by the new use. Since the assumption is the existing use that is on that lot is generating traffic. And we would, if we don't do that, we may be requiring developers to essentially double count trips or take into account trips that are already on the network or already generated by a parcel. And counting them as new trips, even though they really wouldn't be. So we looked into that. There, there's also requests to consider waivers for infeasible improvements. For that one, we are looking at trying to add in some language just to address sort of the level of improvements and really address the, the nexus and proportionality issue that we run into and that we're very cautious of when we talk about improvements that are recommended in a TIA. Also, a consideration for allowing signal timing adjustments as recommended improvements in TIA. We address, we've adjusted our language a little bit in that, but we've also have moved some of that into the administrative manual. So we have a little bit more flexibility with that. There was, and this is one that we, that we were already planning to try and address, but consider relaxing driveway spacing requirements for existing side access for redevelopment, which we are trying to address with our revisions. One of the big reasons for this is that oftentimes what we run into is someone will be coming in to develop a parcel. They have an existing driveway cut. And they've gone through NCDOT. NCDOT is happy with where that existing driveway cut or proposed driveway is located. But by our standards, they would have to have a different location. Or we've also run into where, because of our standards, a parcel cannot have a driveway at all. And so we're trying to make sure that we do not run into that situation with these amendments. We, there was a request to consider revising the terminology. Instead of using terminology, recommended improvements, use identified improvements when talking about improvements that are identified in a TIA. And we are looking at, at using that, revising our terminology to address that. And then finally, there's also a comment about requiring a queuing analysis for drive-through establishments. Currently in our ordinance in this section, we have a set number of cars or set stacking distance we have for drive-throughs based on number of cars from the order box and the order window. And there was a comment during the stakeholder session that other municipalities will sometimes look at that as part of a TIA to determine how many stacking spaces you actually should have. So we are looking at that as well. Next slide. And with that, that's a relatively quick overview of our proposed amendments. But I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ben. So if I understand correctly, you've just given us the overview and kind of a warning that we're going to be given a lot more detail at next month. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we wanted to do this because these amendments are, the proposed amendments are, it's a, it's a large section in our ordinance. It's a very important section of our ordinance. And they are, you know, they will, they definitely warrant some, some time to, to review and be prepared for discussion. So we wanted to provide an overview of this meeting so that when you receive them in your packet, you'll hopefully have an idea of what's coming and will know to take the time to really look through them before the meeting so that we can have adequate discussion if needed to at the meeting.
Very good. It seemed to me as you went through that presentation that an awful lot of this is to provide staff more flexibility. And is that primarily based on experience or is it based on requests from developers?
A little bit of both, but a lot of it is, is experience. What we have found, and especially over the last, more recently, over the last several, over the last couple of years, our UDO, this section of our UDO and the UDO itself was written and adopted back in 2013, 2014. What we have found is that especially when it comes to this section of the UDO, a lot of these standards were written from the perspective of looking at a, a, what we call a greenfield site, where there's nothing existing on the ground and, you know, and, and there's not a whole lot around it. And so these, these are very good standards when you have a lot of undeveloped land and a lot of undeveloped area. As you all know, Mooresville does not have much of that remaining. And a lot of the developments we've, we've gotten in over the last several years have been in areas where it's an infill parcel, where there's already things developed on either side of it. Or it's a redevelopment itself. And these standards, the way they had been written and the way they're currently written in our UDO are very difficult to meet sometimes if it's, if everything's existing around it, including even curb cuts. And so a lot of these amendments we've approached from the perspective of it gives staff a little bit more flexibility while still maintaining some objective standards of how to use that flexibility and not just opening it wide up, still maintaining, still maintaining standards, but being, allowing us to address situations where it's, it may be nearly impossible, if not impossible, for our standards to be met.
I understand. So your prime example, I think that was the, was the driveway one. So you're doing two things. You're, you're revising the driveway spacing requirements, but you're also saying that staff would have flexibility within the manual to accommodate things like existing, existing situations.
Yes. Yeah. And part of that too is, is recognizing with the amendments, what we're trying to do, what, what we, the way they're written, what we were trying to do too, is recognize that because so many of our roads are NCDOT roads, NCDOT has the driveway permitting authority for many of these roads. So while we do want to maintain good access management, at the same time, if DOT is okay with a driveway location, why should the town not, why shouldn't the town be okay with it as well? If there's not a whole lot of flexibility to have it elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. So let me throw it open to other members of the board. Do you have any questions for Ben? And if you'd like to indicate that in the chat box, that would be great. Chris, I think you have a comment. Go ahead.
Hi, Ben. This is Chris. This was a great job. This is really detailed. I have, I have kind of a question. As we start to do more and more housing and the greenways start to connect and people start to ride bikes, have you considered putting any type of standard around a dog park? The difference between a relief park and a, and a dog park based on square footage? Just because Parks and Recreation is dealing with a lot of requests for dog parks. The apartment buildings have dogs and they use the greenways. If I was a dog, that would be a great place to run. There's a lot of unleashed dogs now. So for example, not to pick on the last development we discussed, but that greenway goes right behind there. There's 100 people that'll be living there. And it's right in their backyard. So they're going to use the greenway to walk out. And a certain percentage, as soon as they touch the path, are going to unhope their dogs. So it becomes kind of a safety as well as they don't clean up on the greenways. I just wondered if you considered in these developments, putting some size requirements or some guidelines so that the dogs are readily contained within the housing area versus using the greenways as bicycles and more people start to use the greenways. I'm concerned we'll start to see some issues with the amount of dogs that are using it running free.
So in, so we do have, we do have some general standards for construction of greenways, including standard width and everything. This, but those are generally for the most part in the EDCM. And then they're also in the CTP. As far as the question around dog parks, that would not be covered in this section of the UDO.
Okay. All right. All right. Because I was just thinking within the developments, I know it's not typically a standard, but at some point, as we have more and more growth here and the demand for dog parks exists, it should be housed probably within that housing development. And they incur the cost either through an HOA fee or their development fees versus the city trying to take ball fields and convert those into parks. So just, just a thought. Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Lee, I think you have a comment. Go ahead.
Sorry, I muted myself. So you had said that we didn't have a driveway spacing within street standard before. Saying, I guess have we, in the past, have we just sort of said, ah, it looks good? I mean, how was that working?
So, and that's one of the, that's one of the cases where it's been a little bit, I think we've, we've done a couple of different things in the past when looking at spacing between actual driveways. I know, I think at times in the past, we've used our driveway spacing standards that if you read the ordinance, it's technically from, generally written to be from street intersection. And some, and at times we've used that standard. We've considered a driveway to be a street intersection. And as, as it's currently written, we have the thing that's weird about our driveway spacing section is that we have, depending on what, what the spacing standard is, some of them are clearly from driveway intersections or from intersection, street intersections. And some of the spacing standards actually do say driveway intersections or center line to center line. So with the table, we're hoping to clarify that and just say that, you know, we are, we do want to look at spacing between driveways on certain level of roadways. If you'll, Michelle, if you can go back to slide 11, you'll see we, we actually did not include spacing standards for the local roads because we found that that's, those are generally the, the level of roads that'll be built in newer subdivisions where it may be a townhome where the driveways are literally, you know, five or 10 feet apart.
Right. Yeah. Especially if we're trying to do more, you know, potential allowable density like these cottage courts or whatever. I mean, I can see situations where you need to have driveways close together just because of the facing one way or a corner or whatever. So.
Exactly. But for, you know, access management and to try and ensure that we maintain decent through flow on the, on the major roads, that's where we do want to try and have some driveway spacing standards for the higher level roadways, such as the collectors and the thoroughfares.
And I would say 50 feet is awfully close together for a collector. What, which one, what's an example of a collector road again?
Church Street is a collector. I think technically Town Hall Drive may be a collector. And, and collectors are meant to have, are, are meant to have a minimal level of access management.
And that was, that's what I had seen before when I was reading it, kind of before the meeting. I mean, I had a question though.
Any other board members have any questions or comments? Sanjay, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Ben. As always, a thorough job. Couple of quick questions. You, you know, the feedback you've got about the TIA calculations being updated. You know, you have heard us, especially Tim and me and others have kind of raised this multiple times, that the current ways we compute the TIA trips and others seems to be on a very conservative side as opposed to what we see on the streets. So my, my only request to you would be that as you look at those, if you will, request from the developers, you know, we shouldn't be going, we shouldn't give them more leverage of, you know, reducing those numbers further. As is, we are kind of, we think we are on the, on the conservative side. So that, that's something you know, you could address or tell me if I'm wrong. The, the other question I had was, you mentioned changing the words from recommendation to identified. Does that imply that they, that the, you know, that they have to do implement the recommend, implement the, you know, items listed? Or what is driving that? Or what is driving that change of wording?
So, um, to, to answer your first question on the, the trip generation, I mean, we certainly do want to still remain, you know, pretty conservative in, in making, and when we look at the number of trips that may be generated by a new development. Um, I believe that, you know, any of the changes we're making, we, we're, we're still staying on that conservative side. Um, but some of it is a matter of thinking, you know, also looking at, at it fairly. Um, as far as, you know, if we're, why are we requiring them to, um, double count vehicles that may already be out there. So, um, as for the, um, the, your second point about the change in the, in the language. Um, the, so the way, and, and it's been, I, I think there's been some confusion, but um, T I As have always, they're, they in and of themselves are are a tool and, and are based on estimates. They're not, they are by no means an exact science. Um, I think y'all have heard me say this before. It, it gives you an idea of what the traffic will be, you know, what the impacts can be, but it's by no means an exact science. Um, and we run into, especially with, with some of our standards, um, for T I As. We have run into and especially more recently over the last several years, a lot of developments that have, you know, where the only way to make, to um, address their impacts is to, you know, four lane or six lane a road that is not directly in front of their development or, um, add, you know, three turn lanes. Take, take a, a turn that currently only has one turn lane and add two additional turn lanes to it. And so, um, and in those instances, you know, we also, while we want to make sure that the impacts are addressed. We also don't want to become a, a sea of asphalt either. Um, and so, and we, you know, we do, we're working on trying to have better and more sidewalks and greenways and transit. Um, and so by, by changing the terminology from recommended to identified, it, it makes it clear that we're not necessarily going to require that every improvement a T I identifies must be, you know, tried to be addressed by that development because a lot of times it's impossible. Um, for development to address every single improvement that a T I identifies is needed in order to address their impact. Um, so we still do have the language in our, and we will keep language in this section. That makes it clear, you know, that if it, if a T I doesn't identify an improvement. You know, the first step is, is there, is it a feasible improvement that the development can address either through construction or payment of a proportional payment in lieu or, or some other way.
So to your earlier comment around being, you know, fair, right? I, I agree, we need to be fair. The, the, the concern we kind of expressed, I think in the last, uh, maybe the last couple of sections was we look at T I A side by side, right? Or a, you know, application by application. But when that traffic hits, let's say Church Street or Town Hall Drive, you know, I'm just using these as examples. The combined traffic of all the properties that have developed, you know, somehow, I don't know whether it is get, it gets lost or is accounted for somewhere, right? We, we need to think about those, the, the cumulative impact of all these developments we approve. And how does that eventually get into, uh, you know, either expanding of those thoroughfares or, you know, small streets that those communities will feed into. Now we need to account for that somehow. Or at least the numbers, you know, when we talk about them, uh, at approval time should be clear. Because it is hard for us to know, hey, if we approve this, you know, it says 100 vehicles will be on the road, but what does that mean cumulatively on the entire thoroughfare of that particular street? Right? That's something that will help us, uh, and if, if you present them, that will help us get a better idea of what the impact to the community. Um, and, and the only, and the other question I had was I see a whole lot of school buses, you know, stop on streets. And in many cases, they stop in such a way that it, it becomes a bit of a dangerous situation for students, uh, for the crossover into those bus stops. Is there something that we could identify on the streets as potential bus stops? And maybe have some, some kind of safety around those areas developed? I, I don't, I'm just, you know, brainstorming with you here, uh, so that at least there is some provision for those areas being designated as potential bus stops and have some ways to uh, for students to wait there while the buses come over and things of that nature.
I will say from the standpoint of the U D O, I think that would be very difficult. Um, you know, obviously we have no control over the routing of school buses or, or where school buses stop. And, you know, it, the, each level of school has a different school bus. And so, you know, you may, for five years, you may have a lot of elementary school students in one area, and then all of a sudden they become middle school students and they scatter different. So that in and of itself is very difficult and I think probably nearly impossible to handle from a U D O standpoint. I will say, just, just so you're aware, um, we have in the past, in coordination with um, the police department and, and some other folks have done, um, what we call school safety audits in areas nearby schools. And we looked at that situation where we know there's a school bus stop. And have looked at ways to address that. One, um, a couple of years ago, we, we worked on one, um, and actually over on Treybrook Drive. Um, there's a public, there's a public school bus stop, um, in front of the apartments there. And then you also have the Sterling Montessori School access there. And then you have the on-street parking and by going out there and, and looking at the situation, actually when the school bus was around. We were able to realize there were some issues and we worked with our public works department, our police, and were able to I think actually get the school system to modify where the bus stop was. And also do some changes with the on-street parking on the road to, to address potential site business issues. So um, certainly we can address those as they come up, but that's really more of a something that we would do on an ongoing basis, working with D O T, um, and, and the school system and the police department rather than through development review with the U D O.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Well, I'm going to circle back to, to Ben and I think you should probably be prepared for some quite detailed discussion on the T I A subject. Uh, I hear your need for flexibility. But you know that schools and traffic are the number one and two issues right now within Mooresville. So any suggestion that we're in any way going to let developers off the hook, I think that would be um, an item for discussion. So, uh,
Uh, yeah.
I, I think you might want to just, you know, budget some time to make, to have that discussion. Any other comments or questions from the board? I'm holding the microphone here. I have a quick question for you, Ben. I didn't fully understand what was meant by the change to the access from a cul-de-sac to a public right of way. Did I miss something there?
That has to do with, we have a section in our, or in this section of ordinance, um, a requirement that allows, um, staff to require a developer, if they're proposing a cul-de-sac that is nearby a, a, a public street. Um, so for an example there, um, if you remember a couple of years ago, there was a group of new townhomes that were constructed up on, um, Church Street, right by Kits Creek. Just north Kits Creek, right by the, the border there. They, part of that development, there's a, um, round, there's a cul-de-sac um, that dead ends right near the Kits Creek property. Um, and so, but they only have the one entrance. So what we, we actually required them to provide a pedestrian path from that cul-de-sac out to, out to the Church Street sidewalk. So that people wouldn't have to go all the way back in the development, all the way back to the main access and then come all the way back down um, to get to, you know, Kits Creek. If they wanted to walk down the sidewalk on Kits Creek or walk down, you know, Church Street to get on the greenway. And so it's, it's essentially, it's providing a, it's, it allows us to provide a pedestrian connection from the end of a cul-de-sac to a nearby public street that has an existing sidewalk on it. Um, and so right now, the way the language is written, um, it's, it, it references specific things like transit stop for schools or, or shopping. And we taken that very liberally because we like to see more pedestrian connectivity than less. Um, and so trying to revise that section, make it clear that really if you're going to have a cul-de-sac that ends nearby a public street right away with an existing sidewalk, we really won't want to see you connect to that public sidewalk.
Thank you. Um, I kind of support that, but, um, you were perhaps not in the town when we had some very vigorous debate. We had allowed that from a cul-de-sac. I think the subdivision is Wexford.
Yeah.
And, um, we, I mean, the plan called for pedestrian access from the end of that cul-de-sac, which is right by their amenity center, their swimming pool to the small number of shops on the corner of Davis and McCrimmon. And we got a lot of negative feedback from the residents. So that pedestrian access was actually taken away. So, um, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah. I will say on that one, that one is more, I would consider more of cross-access. Um, what the cut-through access would actually be directly back to a street, a, a public street, not necessarily to another development. But it's, it's, it can certainly be a double-edged sword, um, depending on which side of the fence, so to speak, you, you're on.
Right. Yeah. Um, that requirement or request for that access came about because one of your predecessors with responsibility for transportation led some council members and planning board members through some um, situations in Cary where pedestrians had actually forced their way from cul-de-sacs and so on to adjacent properties. So, you know, we tried to, to make it legitimate rather than a muddy path that people were following anyway. So anyways, that discussion perhaps for another time. Any other comments on item six here?
I don't have a comment on item six since we have been, I guess, was, you know, uh, hope to get some feedback or update on the, you know, expansion of aviation Parkway from 54 all the way to, uh, 40. And, you know, potentially the, uh, you know, we had talked about, um, the railway crossing, you know, how could you do the bypass of the railway crossing between near our, uh, Mooresville, uh, 54 intersection, right? So any, any updates on that, Ben, or any new ideas on those things that have come along?
Um, Chairman Pritchard, are you okay if I go on and answer that?
Uh, yes. Um, we're, it's such a golden opportunity to have you here, Ben. So please go ahead.
Um, so as far as the widening of Aviation Parkway, that project um, that has been delayed by N C D O T and is now not shown for funding for construction until I believe either 2029 or 2030. Um, so about 10 years out. Um, however, and then as far as when we, I think what you're talking about is when we had, we had a couple of presentations talking about some um, different options for grade separations. That is not in the plans. They need, um, at this time, there's no, no plan to grade separate, um, aviation and N C 54 in the railroad. Um, there's no funding available for that. What the Aviation Parkway widening project will do and what D O T has included in that project is a, um, essentially, it's a, it's, the goal is essentially to remove left turns from the aviation N C 54 and Mooresville Carpenter and N C 54 intersection. And force those, um, left turns instead of turning left at the intersection. They would actually use a new, um, for lack of a better term, loop road that would follow approximately Cotton Drive. And then there would be, and then there'd be a new road that would come off of Cotton Drive and connect out to N C 54 on the, um, north or west side of that 54 aviation intersection. Um, so at the intersection itself, you would only really have three movements. You would have left turns off of 54 and you would have right turns off of 54 or off of Aviation and Morsel Carpenter. But if you were on Aviation or Morsel Carpenter wanted to turn left onto 54, you would have to, um, either turn before the intersection or go through the intersection and turn on to what is Cotton Drive today and go up and access 54 away from the intersection itself.
Got it. It's more like the jug handles in New, in, in New Jersey.
Exactly. Yeah. It's a jug handle intersection and it's, um, it should make the intersection safer. Um, and it should also allow for more throughput through that intersection. Um, allow it'll, instead of having to account for turn lanes, um, which was very difficult with the railroad there, you can have just straight through lane across the railroad.
And, and I suppose these provisions of the jug handles are also accounted for in the uh, Town Hall, uh, uh, you know, development plan. Or other, you know, the impacts of these proposed jug handles will somehow get reflected in how the, you know, Town Hall, uh, or the Town Center is.
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
All right. Well, thank you, Ben. I think, um, we're ready to move ahead to item seven.
Right. So, thank you, Chairman. Uh, for the January 2020 newsletter. Um, did not see a lot of activity in January in terms of new development applications coming in or new administrative approvals, um, being granted. Um, however, um, in other news, that there did continue to be a, a large focus, um, on the land use plan. Um, really over the last couple of months. Um, that public hearing, uh, was continued until February 9th. Um, so, uh, last Tuesday, uh, Town Council um, did discuss the land use plan again. Um, they went through it, um, in some detail, kind of going through, um, neighborhood by neighborhood or, or area by area on the west side of town. Had some detailed discussions, um, as far as future la, land use designations, um, in some of those areas. Um, particularly discussions related to medium density residential versus low density residential. So staff is in the process of making some revisions based on their feedback. And, um, we're looking at potential adoption of the plan, um, at their February 23rd meeting. And we do also have a couple of staffing updates. Um, we had a new planner one, Caleb Alred, who started, um, in January. Um, he came to us from Holly Springs where he was a planner one. Um, and he has, um, a bachelor's degree in planning from Appalachian State, um, and is currently working on his masters as well. So I know Ben is, uh, very happy to, to have him on board. Um, he took Dylan, Dylan's old position. Um, and then, uh, want to congratulate, uh, both planner two, Emily Langston and Code Enforcement Officer Anna Willis. Um, both of them have obtained, uh, certified zoning official certification in the state of North Carolina. Um, and that is all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Michelle. Very good. So now we'll move to board comments. If you could notify in the chat, if you have any comments, please go ahead. Wow. Quite much this evening. Okay. Well, hearing none, seeing none. I guess that takes us to item nine. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I have a second to that motion.
One second.
I think that was Tim. Thank you, Tim. So Marty, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Pritchard.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Member Ocharia.
Aye.
Member SAC.
Aye.
Member Toterai.
Aye.
The motion was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Marty. So thanks to, to you and staff. And it was a great pleasure to see Ben this evening. Look forward to some interesting discussion next month. And we are officially adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.